2021 Regular Meeting of Council to Order. Councilperson Kirchner will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
... United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger? Mr. Krieger?
I can see. It unmuted.
Is he unmuted? Mr. Landik?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Good evening. I want to wish all present in the City of Mentor residence a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I also want to welcome the public to the City Council Virtual Public Meeting. If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q&amp;A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in this meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation since the public cannot physically attend in person at this time. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be permitted to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If you wish to comment on an item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments unrelated to the agenda will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council portion of the agenda. Please make your speaking request at this time, and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the December 1st, 2020 Regular Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Minutes of December 1st, 2020 Regular Meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, Ordinance Number 21-0-001.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a software as a service agreement with OpenGov Inc. for permitting, licensing, and code enforcement services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council may be aware of the fact that we have been utilizing a software system called EnterGov for most of our permitting and planning functions for over a dozen years now. It's obviously dated, and we spent a lot of time, frankly, over several years trying to locate what we thought would be the best option for us as a replacement, also as we desire to move more and more toward GIS-based and cloud-based software usage. So we have finally settled on a software program that we believe will suit our needs. And Mr. Swigger, could you tell council a little bit more about it, please?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Since 2009, the city's engineering and building and planning departments have been using EnterGov for various functions such as permitting, inspection, planning, cashiering, and code enforcement. Software is 12 years old, and EnterGov no longer supports it. In addition, EnterGov does not have GIS integration or a citizen portal module, which are essential for modern building, planning, and code enforcement operations. Realizing that this software was outdated, the engineering and building and planning departments, with the assistance of the IT department, requested and received proposals for new planning and building software in December of 2019. Five proposals were received from following vendors: Acela, CitizenServe, iWork, Tyler Technologies, which is EnterGov, and Viewpoint Cloud, now OpenGov. Acela, Citizen Serve, and Tyler Technologies all had first-year deployment costs that were greater than $100,000. At the end of the five-year contract, costs varied between around $400,000 and $800,000. OpenGov and iWork were both under $100,000 for their first-year deployment costs, and both had fixed costs over the five years. OpenGov, while a little more expensive than iWork, was determined to be better software to suit the city's needs. Software is highly configurable and based on interviews with current customers, can be configured with ease and in-house by city staff. OpenGov provides a citizen service self-service portal, parcel data updates, third-party plan review software, integration, and unlimited reports and letters with the software service pricing provided. With OpenGov, the city is modernizing the permitting process from applicant submission to permit issuance and inspection. City's residences and the business community can expect to have similar experience applying for a permit as they would shopping online. For those individuals that would still like to apply in person, that, of course, will still be available. Once the OpenGov platform is online, residents and businesses will be able to submit and pay for permits through a web portal, track and monitor the status of their applications, request inspections, review their historical permits, payments, inspections, and in-progress applications, message city staff through the application approval process, receive and print their permits at home. An additional benefit of the platform is the inclusion of management reports and customizable dashboards that can be utilized to track and manage various metrics. OpenGov has a proven track record in the state of Ohio, is currently working with communities like the city of Worcester, city of Mansfield, city of Upper Arlington, city of Hudson, and many others. In addition to bringing the cloud-based permitting and code enforcement solution to our residents, the OpenGov platform is also modernizing the permit process for city staff as well. We expect OpenGov to deliver the following improvements to our day-to-day operations: streamline review and approval of applications by automating our internal workflows and approval process; improve operational efficiency by leveraging reporting and executive-level dashboards with built-in management features to measure the department's performance; leverage route optimization software for scheduling most efficient routes for inspectors; also provides inspectors with a mobile-friendly application with offline capabilities, so while in the field they can review the application, historical records, and ultimately pass or fill the inspection with supporting documentation with iPad. It combines the department's historical records and their common platform for comprehensive review of historical data when making a determination on an application; streamlines communication with the applicant throughout the approval process with built-in messaging for real-time communication. OpenGov is a cloud-based system that provides flexible portal access that our citizens and contractors can utilize, will also improve operational efficiencies with our city staff. This proposal also includes GIS and on-base document management integration. It is recommended the city enter into a software services agreement with OpenGov, the cloud-based permitting, inspection, planning, and code enforcement software solution. Thank you.
Counsel, that's a long way of saying we can better serve our residents.
That's all it does. Couldn't we repeat that?
This is the wave of the future, so I think, is there any discussion? Questions? Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-001 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-002.
An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances of the city of Mentor, December 2020, as amended by adapting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zeeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The vast majority of this is just the publication pages of ordinances previously enacted by the council. Two new items for publication and adoption. One is to the traffic code, and this will harmonize our local ordinances with new state law, which prohibits wearing earplugs or headphones while driving. The other housekeeping item is actually a repeal. Ohio law relative to criminal child enticement was ascertained to be constitutionally overbroad and therefore not enforceable. So in the absence of some replacement statute at the state level, the recommendation is to repeal the local ordinances to get this ordinance, which is determined to be unconstitutional off the books, so I recommend passage.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-002 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-003.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an economic development grant with Vetrio Retinal Consultants, Inc.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Malcheck momentarily here, but this ordinance and the next are two new healthcare providers that have moved into the new office building on Milton Parkway that the city participated in, so we're glad to see the benefits of that already here in our local economy. Mr. Malcheck.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. As council is aware, a new 38,000-square-foot two-story medical office building was constructed on Milton Parkway. Council may recall that there was an agreement that was joined with the city to help provide some infrastructure improvements for them through a TIF. But in addition to that, as Mr. Philippiac said, there are two different consulting, medical consulting services that are moving into that building from other cities, so both were eligible for an economic development grant. The first that we're considering is for Vetrio Retinal Consultants, investing $300,000 in capital improvements, creating 32 new jobs, and expecting a payroll of just over $1 million. We are recommending a one-time grant of $10,000 for that company.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-003 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-004.
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an economic development grant for Periodontal Associates, Inc.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malcheck, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. As previously mentioned, this is the second of those two medical service providers that are moving in. Periodontal Associates invested approximately $400,000 in capital improvements, creating 20 new jobs with a payroll of $650,000. We do recommend a one-time grant as part of this ordinance of $6,000.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-004 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-005.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to JCL Equipment Company for the purchase of a paint striping truck and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is the next big step for us to bring our road, entire road painting program in-house. Mr. Flucker, please.
Thank you. As was discussed during the budget review process, is the city's intent to perform road striping in 2021 using city forces and equipment. The first step in this process is to purchase a paint striping truck. This end, a bid opening was held on December 28th, with two vendors submitting the bids listed below. Easy Liner Industries submitted a significantly lower bid. Their proposal contained 43 exceptions to our bid specifications. Most important of these deviations relate to the size and durability of the vehicle itself. Additionally, the JCL truck carries twice as much paint and twice as many beads. JCL truck also has the capability of painting two lines at the same time, while the Easy Liner does not. Overall, the city's bid specifications were focused on longevity of the equipment, productivity during the striping process. In short, it is my recommendation that we purchase the truck bid by JCL Equipment Company, along with Option 1B, which is a laser-pointing guiding system, for a total price of $257,830. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-005 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-006.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a labor agreement on behalf of the city of Mentor with the International Association of Firefighters Union and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Zampeter here in just a moment, but I do just want to say for the record that we have been negotiating with our firefighters' union for a while now, and obviously, our focus and their focus hasn't been entirely on that process in light of COVID and their response and the city's response to the pandemic. I just want to say publicly how proud we are of the men and women in our fire department and our medics and how well they have responded to this, and I certainly highly recommend adoption of this contract term. Mr. Zampeter?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Counsel, I'm happy to bring to you a consensus package from management and the full-time fire union after an extensive process for the reasons that Mr. Philippiac gave. I think both sides are happy with the package that was brought out in its finality, and the significant pieces of this are basically two and a quarters each of the three years of the contract in terms of wage increases. And in terms of what management got, we do have the ability now to implement a random drug testing program should management desire to in the future. Currently, our drug testing program and all of our safety forces are for reasonable suspicion only. So other than that, there was some language that the fire union felt was important to them, that believed was fair to award in this package, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-006 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-007.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to a labor agreement on behalf of the city of Mentor with the Mentor Part-Time Firefighters Association and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my comments about the outstanding work of our firefighters certainly extends to our part-time firefighters as well, who have done just as well in the field in protecting our residents. This particular agreement before you actually pertains only to the final year of their contract, which has a wage reopen or only.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. This is the only bargaining unit that is sort of out of our cycle. Our cycle with our five full-time units basically ran through March 20th, March of 2020. The part-time firefighters trail by a year. As has been our practice in the past, we usually have a pattern in which we leave a reopen for their third year, which is always the first year of the full-time contract, and that's designed to sort of allow them to sort of mirror in part what the full-time union may get. That is the case in this instance. It is a two-and-a-quarter percent increase for their third year. We will be entering into negotiations with them in 21 now for their next three-year period. I would recommend ratification by council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-007 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-007. Resolutions Number 21-R-101.
A resolution requesting an advance of funds collected for the benefit of the city of Mentor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, as council is aware, as we allocate our program for each of our Community Development Block Grant rounds, some of that money goes unspent. We routinely reprogram that through legislation, both through legislation and in some instances administratively within the scope of the program that you approve. This will essentially close out fiscal years 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019 in their entirety and most of 2019's program, and this is the local match, portion of the local match in terms of the actual cash that we'll contributing to our project at the Mentor looking first phase.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution Number 21-R-101.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to reprogram previously unspent fiscal years 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019 funds into the Fiscal Year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is something that we do every year, requesting that the Auditor's Office provide funding for property taxes in advance of their collection each year.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Resolution Number 21-R-101 has been adopted. Resolution Number 21-R-102.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to reprogram previously unspent fiscal years 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019 funds into the Fiscal Year 2019 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. As council is aware, as we allocate our program for each of our Community Development Block Grant Rounds, some of that money goes unspent. We routinely reprogram that through legislation, both through legislation and in some instances administratively within the scope of the program that you approve. This will essentially close out fiscal years 2016, 17, and 18 in their entirety and most of 2019's program, and this is the local match, portion of the local match in terms of the actual cash that we'll contributing to our project at the Mentor looking first phase.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 21-0-007 has been approved. Ordinance Number 21-0-007. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, ordinance number 20-0-087.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a tax increment financing agreement with Omni SLF Mentor LLC related to the construction of senior living facilities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zeeman.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, appreciate your patience on this as we sorted through what the reservation was on their side, and as it turns out, it's sort of a, it wasn't Omni, actually, it was their bond council. Turns out, the facility is going to actually be owned by the Cuyahoga Port Authority, which is going to be issuing bonds to finance its construction. So there's language in Section 10 regarding prevailing wages, and I'll just quote briefly, "public infrastructure owned or to be owned by the city or another public authority." So their bond council saw "or another public authority" and was very, very concerned about that language and its applicability to what the port authority would be owning. Obviously, this is a private facility at the end of the day, privately operated, but since they are going to be entitled, that made their bond council extremely nervous. So we are in agreement that that's appropriate in consultation with Mr. Philippiac. To strike that does not have any material effect on the agreement, and I'm told that Omni's officers have already signed it as amended, so we'll be ready to go. It does not require an amendment by the council if it seeks to approve this agreement tonight because the ordinance itself gives Mr. Philippiac and myself the authority to make these minor changes to it. I wanted to explain it to you just so you knew what the source of the delay was.
So council has the option to table it or approve it?
Correct.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
And we do have some stuff on our website and on social media right now. I can tell you that it's certainly a priority of ours, and it's certainly a priority of every community in Lake County, as well as the health district, to get this thing moving as quickly as possible. There is not wide distribution of the vaccine. I think the health district has received three shipments in three weeks now, and they've been numbered, I think, 400 in the first two weeks and maybe 600 in the last. So I know that everyone in our community and probably the whole country is anxious to get in line for that, and we're anxious to have people in line. I will tell you that our city has already set up and has already made plans for a distribution site at our public works facility. And I think that we will probably be the first community to have such a distribution site. It certainly won't be just for Mentor residents, but probably we won't see that activated until early Phase 1B, but very likely in January. So we will keep our public up to date on that, and we're certainly offering every resource available that we have to the health district to help get this thing moving along.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Kirschner.
Mr. Philippiak, does the health district have literature out, communications out about each phase? You mentioned 1A and 1B. Does it have, and who qualifies for each one of those?
That's a good question. So they do have that available on their website, and they're following state guidelines. So you can also find that information on the state's website, both the governor's site and their special COVID webpage. And it follows essentially CDC guidelines, which is driving this entirety. So because most of the vaccine at this point, all of the vaccine being distributed at the federal level to the states, all states and all local governments are required to follow those guidelines as closely as possible. They do have a little bit of wiggle room, but really not much. And at this point, it's really just a matter of the quantity of the vaccine. So we fully expect that we'll have a system in place to be able to serve the needs of our resident as soon as there's wide distribution of it. And that's going to be a little later. You're probably into certainly February, March.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Krieger.
Yeah, I'd like to say as diligent as our health department has been in shutting down our businesses, I'd like to see the same diligence as far as providing the vaccine. We've all heard stories, local, national, state, where the, it's here, but it's not being given out to the people. I just find that, you know, and it's just not right.
Mr. President? Yeah, and I certainly appreciate Councilman Krieger's comment. What I can tell you is with certainty is that's not happening in Lake County. What vaccines have been received, have been distributed, or are in the process of being distributed? We're just...
I'm not talking about the distribution. I'm talking about we've got the vaccine, are the people getting the shots? That's what I'm hearing that's not happening.
So again, Mr. President, so there are two levels of distribution for the vaccine. That which comes through the general health district, and those vaccines are what I've referred to, those have been distributed. Probably a larger amount has been distributed through the pharmacy network, the Walgreens and the CVSs, and they're responsible for coordinating with the in-house distribution for the congregant care facilities. I know that the health district is receiving information on how that is happening. I can't report on that, but I can ask them for a report and get you that information.
Mr. President?
That's out of their hands.
Mr. President, again, what I'm talking about is I'm not talking about distribution. I know it's been distributed. When are people going to start getting the vaccines? We have a number of businesses throughout our county and city that are closed because of this COVID-19. The sooner they get the vaccine, hopefully sooner our economy will pick up within our city and the county. But I'm not talking about distribution. I get that. When do the people start getting shots?
So again, right now, only Phase 1A persons are eligible to receive it, and those vaccines that have been received have been, when I say distributed, they have been administered to people, the people have received the shots. Phase 1A is predominantly healthcare workers and those in congregant care facilities. And again, there's two levels of distribution, one on the private side through the network of pharmacies and doctors' offices in coordination with doctors' offices and hospital systems, and then that on the public side, which is administered through the general health district, in our case, health departments across the state of Ohio. So we are in a little bit less of a position to know how well on the private side those vaccines are being administered. Chief Searls, I see you in the screen here. Do you have any, can you offer any comments on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Your numbers are correct, and the health department's receiving a limited supply of vaccine right now. As that supply comes in, we are trying to, or we are distributing that, in other words, getting people vaccinated as soon as possible. Mr. Philippiak made it very clear to us that he wants us to be ready when that vaccine is available to our community, and that work is in progress. As far as the long-term care facilities, I don't have those numbers, but as Mr. Philippiak said, that is a report that we can get from the health department. But whatever vaccines in hand is being distributed.
Yeah, Mr. President. Chief Searls, how many shots have actually been given? We understand this has been distributed. How many shots within Lake County or Mentor have actually been given?
I know in Mentor, our firefighters fall in the Phase 1A grouping as EMS workers. Fifty of those vaccines have been administered to our firefighters. As Mr. Philippiak mentioned, there's been three shipments to Lake County as part of the Phase 1A, and the numbers that he gave have all been administered by the health department.
So fifty shots, then?
No, 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 sir. I think we were at three separate shipments, 400. Do you have those numbers again, sir?
Yeah, chief, I want to say that up to this point, that the health department has received is probably around, it's over 1,000. I think they've received shipments of 400, 400, and I think 600. So I know from a report just this morning that I think more than 90% of that has been distributed. Again, it's important to point out that that's all that the health district can directly be responsible for, that which is distributed through the hospital networks and the pharmacy networks. The health district simply receives that information because it's sent, or they have access to it, I should say, that is sent directly to the state. So we hope that, and assume that that's going efficiently, but that's something that the public doesn't have, or at least public administration is not responsible for.
Mr. Blake?
But we'll do our best to get that information. I know that the health district and everybody in the community would like to know if our congregant care facilities in this case are getting their vaccinations in order here.
Mr. Blake?
And what I'd like to hear from the county is what the plan is going to be. I know we're going to have a center here in Mentor, but we don't want to have 200,000 people all showing up on the same day. So I would like to see the county come out with a plan on who's going to get vaccinated at what time and what day, because with these vaccines, they need to come back in either three or four weeks after. So there's a lot of logistics that have to go into this. There's the large freezers that have to be obtained and bought in to store the product. And I'd hate to think that we're going to wait until the vaccine starts rolling in and then try to figure out how we're going to do this logistically.
And when we share that concern, Councilman Blake, and I know that the health district, we know firsthand that they are working on those plans. Registration really is the biggest key, because the distribution network is actually probably on schedule. Would you agree with that, chief? I mean, most of that is happening through logistical ties, through representatives of the health district, the community of fire chiefs and fire departments have organized that. As I mentioned, we have a site that's ready to go right now. Pre-registration of people takes time, and there are some logistical challenges there, but they're being worked on right now through the health department.
I think the earlier that they get on telling us what the plan is, the easier and smoother it's going to get.
Right, because you're right. We can't all show up at once.
Can't all show up at once, albeit mayhem.
Chief, do you have anything else that you can share on some of those preparations?
We met today as a city. We've also were in contact with the Hillcrest area, Cuyahoga County, to look at the way they're doing distribution and ensure that we're going to vaccinate through best practices. But it's important to understand that until we get information and vaccines from the health department, it's hard to move forward. So it's a matter of being ready when the shipments come in, and that's what we're working hard on doing.
Mr. Philippiak, continue your report.
Thank you, just a couple other comments, council. Congratulations to the winner of the 2020 Holiday Lighting Contest. It is Santa Joe at 8209 Plains Road, our local celebrity, and he will receive a prize of a family fun pack continuing passed to several mentor events and facilities. You can also remind the public that they can recycle their Christmas trees by dropping them off at either Garfield Park, Krieger Park, Morton Park, or Walsh. Please remove all direct decorations and plastic bags. Drop-off locations are open through January 31st. Lake County Solid Waste District has informed us that they do plan on operating a full schedule of special drop-offs in 2021 for items such as tires, televisions, and household hazardous waste. Please check their website for further details, and we will certainly bring those events up as they fall. We anticipate the 2021 road repair program will be advertised for bid this Friday with a February council award recommendation. Council, you received an email from the city engineer, I believe today or yesterday, yesterday, I believe, on the PCR ratings and the intended schedule. I know the council has had input on that schedule already. If you have any last-minute questions or concerns, please contact the city engineer directly or myself. The Mentor Ice Arena is now back open for business under new revised protocols, COVID protocols, and the Cleveland Suburban Hockey League is continuing and will continue without a loss of games. The games that were lost during that shutdown have been rescheduled, and a gradual implementation of programs will follow within the next couple of weeks. And finally, council, we have some new businesses that we're thankfully to announce to you. Beyond Juicery and Eatery is now doing business at 9379 Mentor Avenue. The Bluefin Japanese Hibachi and Sushi Restaurant at 8820 Mentor Avenue. Merkel's Flowers is now at 8492 Mentor Avenue. And Trios Italian Grill at 7537 Mentor Avenue. So we thank them for their investment in these tough times, and we wish them great success. Thank you.
Clerk's correspondence, Julie?
Counsel's and receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court month-end report for November of 2020. Also, in receipt of liquor permit notice for Mentor Wing Company LLC doing business as Buffalo Wild Wings at 9566 Diamond Center Drive. That's all.
Commission committee reports, meeting minutes. Tree Commission, November 10, 2020. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, November 10, 2020. Municipal Planning Commission, November 12, 2020. Old business. Hearing none. New business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Krieger?
I just want to comment on the condolences for Dave Noble, longtime friend of the city of Mentor, for Lake Metro Parks Director. He was a champion of parks throughout the entire area and did a great job. I would also like to, for our law director, give condolences to his friends, Nikki's family, who passed away in a fire recently. That's enough said.
Thank you. Other new business. Council, we have appointments to boards and commissions this evening. First is a one-year, one-four-year term on the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals ending 12/31/2024. Just a note, the agenda lists that there are two, but there is only one seat available. Council, do we have any nominees?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Robert Jeffries for the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, term ending 12/31/24.
Second. Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Robert Jeffries has been reappointed to the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals with a term expiring 12/31/2024. We have one four-year term on the Municipal Planning Commission ending 12/31/2024. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President? I'd like to nominate currently seated John Perkovich to a four-year term on the Municipal Planning Commission.
Second. Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. John Perkovich has been reappointed to the Municipal Planning Commission with a term expiring 12/31/2024. Next, we have one four-year term on the Civil Service Commission ending 12/31/2024.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirschner?
I would like to nominate Jim Struna.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
We're going to hopefully get Jim to do 50 years with the city of Mentor.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? James Struna has been reappointed to the Civil Service Commission with a term expiring We have three three-year terms on the Community Arts Commission ending 12/31/2023. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Dowling?
I would like to nominate Jason Lee, Frank Krupa, and Stuart Abbey.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Jason Lee, Frank Krupa, and Stuart Abbey have been reappointed to the Community Arts Commission with terms expiring 12/31/2023. There is one three-year term on the Fair Housing Board ending 12/31/2023. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Todd Green.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? James Struna has been reappointed to the Civil Service Commission with a term expiring We have three three-year terms on the Community Arts Commission ending 12/31/2023. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
I'd like to nominate...
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Christopher Green has been appointed to the Fair Housing Board with a term expiring 12/31/2023. And there is one four-year term on the Tree Commission ending 12/31/24.
Mr. President? I would like to nominate Rod Schroder to return to the Tree Commission.
Second. Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Jason Lee, Frank Krupa, and Stuart Abbey have been reappointed to the Community Arts Commission with terms expiring 12/31/2023. There is one three-year term on the Fair Housing Board ending 12/31/2023. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Todd Green.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?